Phones on?
Yes.
We have one more minute. I should wait. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of South Kingstown Town Council Meeting. Today is October 22, 2018, and I'd like to start by asking my council members and the audience to join us for the pledge.
I pledge to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dale, if I could have you do the roll call, please.
Council President Healy.
Here.
Council Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilwoman DeCruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Glenn Hill.
Here.
Councilman Veale.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item four, do I, can I have a motion to approve item four A, the work session from October 9th, the regular session from October 9th, and the closed executive session from October 9th?
Motion to approve items four, A, B, and C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any oppositions or abstention? No? All those in favor, then it's approved. Item number five is the approval for the consent agenda, and I think Liz has a recusal?
Yes, so I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, but we remove item six D, or no, six E, Creighton Company DBA Sweet Cakes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seeing unanimous, then the motion does carry. Let's move on to item six, which is licenses, A, a resolution granting-
Actually, Meg, if you could just, with Liz recusing, just vote on that one item that was taken off the consent agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve item six E.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and then we have one recusal. Item number six A is a resolution granting a victualling and holiday license to Brew R.I.L.L.C., which is Brew R.I. Coffee Bar in Fortin Road. This is subject to the approval of the Department of Health, and this application has been presented by Jason August of Post Road in Wakeville, and this is a new license. Is anybody here to speak to that license? Please come up to the podium and state your name.
Jimmy Zags.
Okay, and tell us a little bit about what you're going to be doing there.
We are opening a coffee house on the Emporium of Uri. Coffee, donuts, you know, just like cafe.
Is it going to be seven days a week, or what are the hours?
It is going to be seven days a week, seven in the morning till seven at night, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then Thursday through Sunday, it's going to be 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM.
Do we have any questions here at the table?
What kind of donuts?
Kraft donuts, baked, not fried, with different toppings.
Should've brought some in, we would've sampled them.
Yeah.
Any other questions here?
Do you have any experience?
Yes, I used to run a job of madness in Wakefield.
Okay. How long ago was that?
I just left, I was doing that for 12 years.
Okay.
Do we have a motion, then? Is any other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve item six A. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to abstain.
Good luck.
Aye, thank you very much.
We have one abstain to be noted. Moving on to B is a resolution granting a victualling license to Hyde Park Burgers, Five Guys, Kingstown Road in Wakefield. Greg Vasey, Vasey is a member on 20 Main Street in Norfolk. Is anybody here to speak to Five Guys? Please come up to the podium, state your name, and tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
My name is Natasha Lopez. We have taken over ownership of the Five Guys on Kingstown Road. It's just burgers and fries. We're open every day from 11:00 to 10:00 PM.
Nothing's changing?
Nothing's changing, no.
Okay.
Kids love those burgers and fries.
All right, motion to approve item six B.
Second.
Well, we have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's see where we go from here.
Oh, wait, comments?
Okay, now is the time. Item number eight, comments from interested citizens. There is eight A, which is a presentation of citations from the House of Representatives to six members of the South Kingstown Police Department, and Carol Hagan McEntee is here to present those, so we look forward to Carol coming up to the podium.
Well, thank you, Madam President and members of the council. I'll start off with the story. Am I too loud?
Nope.
No?
Good.
Okay. So, on October 10th, as most of you know, you had a debate at Narragansett Town Hall, and during that time, myself and my entire family were present, and when we left the building at approximately 9:50, 9:30, my son Mickey went to his car, and his laptop was missing, and all of his law books and several other items that he could've lived without, but the ones that they took were not. He couldn't live without those. And as you know, anybody who's in college or law school, all of their writings and paperwork and papers that are due are all on their laptop. Anyway, we honestly figured we would probably never see it again, or any of the items, but as luck would have it, with our wonderful police departments, we called Narragansett Police that night, they came over, they took the complaint, they did some, you know, legwork, they found the law books behind trios that night. So then the next day, still no laptop, but the next day Mickey comes back from law school around 11:30 and shows me his iPhone, and it shows a location on his phone as to where the laptop is, and it turns out to be, unfortunately, in Champaign Heights. But from there, we, I called the Narragansett Police, they said, "Come down here right away because, you know, we took the charge," and then we were instructed to go to the South Kingstown Police. So, this is all like 11:30. The two police departments worked so well together, it was amazing. I mean, I didn't see the rest of it, my son went off in the police car with South Kingstown and Narragansett, they did their surveillance, and they ultimately made several arrests, and what they did find was that this was probably a month-long or so of car break-ins that had happened around Narragansett and South Kingstown. My understanding is several items were found, including my son's laptop. So, in the end, he got everything back, and the reason I'm here is, it was so impressive to me to see how these guys, these police officers, what a great department we have, they got right to it, nobody wasted any time, the two departments worked so well together, so it literally took nine, about 9:50, 9:30, the incident, we were, became aware of the incident occurring, and by 2:30 the next day, he had his laptop back, all his books, and I can't thank the police, the South Kingstown Police Department enough, nor can I thank Narragansett as well. But, so what I did is I have citations for all of the offices, and I'd like to bring them up here if you would so indulge me, because I think, you know, not often enough do we see it in action, and how hard they work and the chances they take, and I understand that one of the officers, some kind of fight ensued where one of the alleged defendants had a, you know, had a scuffle with one of the police officers. So, I mean, they went above and beyond, and I just felt I had to come forward and say, "What a great job." So, if I could call everybody up, I have Lieutenant Montefix Hutton, and we all know him by Monte, Officer Monte from the high school years ago, right? I also, Detective Sergeant Trevor Richman, Detective Gary Markey, Detective Jennifer Natale, Detective Joshua Adam, and Detective Kevin Wren. Everybody's here, that's amazing.
It's awesome.
It is awesome, isn't it? And, you know, I know they probably do this every day, and we're just so lucky to have them all, and we're so lucky they keep us safe, and, you know, they get to it, job well done, all of you, I can't thank you enough. So what I have here is a citation in recognition, it's from the State of Rhode Island in Providence Plantation Citation.
Can I ask, just ask the chief to come up as well, so-
Yes, the chief and Captain Chow, please, I'm sorry.
And Captain Healy.
Oh, and Captain, please, we've got to get you in, too. We've got plenty of picture takers here.
It's all right.
Come on up here, Marcus.
I was with the bunny ears.
And I just thought it would be a nice touch to recognize the good job that they do, so that's why I'm here. And so, this is, be it hereby known to all that the Rhode Island House of Representatives hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to each and every one of you from the South Kingstown Police Department in recognition of your dedication, quick response, and teamwork on October 10th and 11th, 2018 with the Narragansett Police, which led to the return of stolen items and the arrest of several individuals involved in a string of vehicle break-ins. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune. And that's given today by me, it's signed by the Speaker of the House, the Majority Leader, and the Minority Leader. So, with that, I'll, you know, hopefully you appreciate these, a small token of my appreciation, and from the appreciation, the appreciation of the entire House of Representatives.
You have the appreciation also of this entire town, you do great work. We don't get to tell you enough about what you do, but certainly, we are so proud of our, of Narragansett as well, I can't negate Narragansett, but we are also proud of you as a community and as a whole for your service to our town.
Thank you very much.
If I could just say one thing, I'd like to thank Representative McEntee for taking the time to give our officers credit. I'd also like to thank Narragansett and all of the supporting staff that helped make this possible. I'd like to thank Captain Yu and Chow for coming tonight, and I'd like to congratulate Mark Healy on his future promotion on October 28th to captain, and thank you everyone.
Thank you very much.
Do you mind if we take a moment for a picture, and if you'd like to join us?
Please take a picture of that.
Anybody up here want to come in?
You don't have room.
Make sure this gets in the paper. Thank you, Carol. Moving on to comments, we welcome the opportunity for anybody else to come up and speak, as now is the time, please come up to the podium and state your name. Come on, you can come up.
Hello, my name is Bob Madiucci, I live at 21 Oliver Drive, South Kingston, Rhode Island. I've lived there for approximately 20 years, and in the past, I've never had any reason to come before this council, because I think South Kingston has been one of the best-run towns in the state of Rhode Island, thanks to people like former town manager, Alan Lord, Vin Vesbia, I'm just a lot of good people, and it's reflected in the quality of life in South Kingston. Now, having said that, something happened last year, which I think has a real severe effect, and a long-term effect, on the future of this town and its administrative policies. Although it's been difficult to get any direct answers, apparently, the town of South Kingston has become a sanctuary city. Now, I wasn't absolutely sure about this until I got a hold of a book called Judicial Watch by Tom Fitton, and it lists South Kingston as the last sanctuary ci, or town or city in the state of Rhode Island. Now, I, I'm sorry, I can't really see this too well, should have glasses.
Want to borrow mine?
Judicial, no. Apparently, this was, this change was enacted, I guess during the summer of last year, and it was enacted by the vote of three people, I believe, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was Mr. Collins, Ms. Glenn Hill, and Mr. DeCruz, who voted in support of this change. Now, I don't really think the crucial issue here is whether or not this change is good or bad, I think the real question is, does this change represent the will of the people of South Kingston? That's the key. And I also don't feel that the average person, who maybe we will see at the ballot box, really understands the implications of what was done. I think as responsible voters, they should find out exactly what this change encompasses, what responsibilities or burdens or lack it places upon the police department, or any others. I don't really have a position on this that I'm advocating right now, I'm advocating representative government, that the town council acts in behalf of the people who elect them. I think that's crucial to a democracy, and I feel that voters should really make an effort to see exactly what was done and what the implications of that are. And I will support, as a resident of this town, whatever decision the voters of this town decide to do. But at this point, this was passed, from what I understand, at the behest of three people, and I just have a lot of trouble with that, because I'm not sure that people really understand what took place. And last and foremost, as I said, I will support whatever decision comes up, I think this should be, this should've been done with a referendum, however, because first and foremost, we are a nation of laws. We follow those laws, and I like to think we follow those laws whether they are given at the federal, state, or local level, I think that's what makes us strong, and that's what makes this town, that's what makes this town what it is. You try to get, you try to get a building permit, you try to do something near the water, you have to follow strict rules, and I think that's what makes South Kingston a good place to live. So I've said what I have to say, I hope I haven't offended anyone, but I really think that that's a key issue in the future of this town, and I think before people vote for anyone, they should find out what their position was on sanctuary cities, because I think that's a major issue facing this country. I thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Do we have any comments here at the table?
Can I make mention one more thing?
Of course.
I just happened to come across something, which I think the council might be interested in. Like I say, I'm not good at this, but, there was a statement, position, taken by Teddy Roosevelt, which I, which I think summarizes what a lot of people feel, does this light, come on? No. It says, "In the first place, we should insist that the immigrant who comes here in good faith becomes an American and assimilates himself to us. He shall be treated in the exact same equality, with equality, as anyone else, nor is, or it would be an outrage to discriminate against any person of any creed or birthplace. But, it is predicated upon a person's becoming in every aspect an American and nothing but an American. There can be no divorced or divided allegiance, any man who says, 'All we have room for here is one flag, the American flag, we have room for one language, the English language, and we have room for one sole loyalty, and that is to the American people.'" That's a quote from Teddy Roosevelt, and I subscribe to that, and I hope that will guide the council in making any further decisions on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there are any further, please, okay, please come up to the podium.
Good evening, how are you?
How are you, Mr. Traeger?
I'm pretty good. I came tonight because I make the mistake of listening to the news over the weekend, just tonight alone, and I'm glad I came to hear what I just heard. And I'd like to know who's in favor of sanctuary cities, because I want to make sure I vote for you. And a little statement here, I kind of play off other people's thoughts and ideas, and I would say, there are many things that I don't understand, more things that I don't understand than I do. But just tonight, before I came over, I was listening to the news hour, and just to give you a quick, I know everybody's heard about these things, but these are things that are going on that are so important to at least have form, an intelligent opinion about, if that's possible. I don't think it's possible on the Saudi question, because there's no way anybody's going to ever find out the truth there, not with the people that are involved there. These are people that can manipulate the world. So that's all, that's not going to happen, but, boy, you need to pay attention to it when we're sending weapons over there by the droves, and I know it's a lot of money for some people, but unfortunately, those weapons are killing the people in Yemen. Right now, I listened to a very, I'm not going to get into any, because I, this stuff is so mind-boggling, but right now, they, one of the respected people from the government said that the world right now is facing possibly the worst famine in the history of mankind. Eight million people may starve shortly. That's something to think about, you know, just, let's send some more rockets over there. Anyway, it's more than rockets, but I'd like to see us send food. Anyway, that's one little thing that's happened, and then another little thing that came up. Oh, 7,000 people right now are on the march, going through, going into Mexico and heading our way. Well, in, I heard a possible response to this by our President Trump, the President of the United States of America. Anyway, well, let's get these governments to do something about this, and if they don't, well, we're going to, you know, curtail aid or this, that, or the other thing. What are these people running away from? 7,000 people? You think it might have anything to do with the governments over there? Just a slight possibility? Anyway, but, so what does that kind of a statement, that didn't, where I believe, any thought process? I consider myself a very ignorant person, but when I hear stuff like that, I think I'm a genius, to be honest with you. Anyway, what's one of the other ones today? This is all, this is stuff that's been going on, they talk and talk and talk about it, you know, there's a lot of talk and very, very little positive action. And I agree with the speaker that was just up here a few minutes ago, when he said that we're, I've said this many times to you in the past, we're living in a great town and a great little cocoon, and if we could pour, if we could put, put it all around us and just get away with it, but we're not going to be able to do that anymore, not with the communications that are available to mankind today, and that could be positive and it could be negative. I don't know. Oh, yeah, I got, I just got to mention this one, because this is another one that's just being, it's just thrown out just recently, I think the last couple of days. This idea of, let's define what a man is, and let's define what a woman is, and, have you heard about this one yet?
Yes.
Well, transgender, it's about this controversy, that shouldn't, it isn't really a controversy anymore, I guess it's been studied, and people are, everybody's different, every person is different, and, but, well, it's another thing being thrown out there. We don't have enough to worry about? This has pretty much been going in a decent direction in this country, and no, now it's not a decent direction anymore. Now we're going in another direction? Well, boy, oh, boy. It's hard. I'm going to be 80 next year, I don't know if I want to be 80 next year, I'll be honest, honest to God, I really, I wish I knew what to do. I wish I knew what to do. I'm not smart enough to jump, and it wouldn't do any good anyway, because people don't listen, people don't care, and I wrote a paper way back when I first started, I think it was a graduate, when I was in graduate school, maybe, but it was about caring, and I'm beginning to reflect back about 35 or 40, 50 years ago. I should've pursued that whole idea a lot better than I have in my own life, but, boy, I'll tell you, we better start pursuing it now, because we are going in so many negative directions morally, ethically, in this country, that's the scary thing I've ever, ever faced in my life, listening to some of these people talk and, and accept the, I can't use bad language, so I'm not going to say anything else, but to accept some of the things that are told, and are even the way they're discussed in the media now, you know? Oh, the other one, I'll give you one more now, that's right, the, oh, well, let's discontinue the arms treaty with Russia, let's just discontinue that. How much thought went into that? I listened to two people on PBS with different opinions on that today, but, no matter what, are we going to go backwards with that one, too? Let's go forward, let's figure out how to straighten that out. It's the most scary time, and if you don't see it that way, you have a perfect right not to, and I hope you are happier than I am.
Thank you.
Thanks, well, listen, I had to get that over just.
Thank you. Any other comments before- Any other comments before the council, before we...
Sure. Go ahead.
Can I come up again, Meg?
Of course.
Thank you, Madam President. So I guess I'm citation crazy tonight, but as a sitting member of the House of Representatives, I couldn't not get this. For you, Madam President.
Me?
Yes. So I know you have... I understand you have one more meeting. I wasn't sure if you did or not. So I have nothing but marvelous things to say about you. I was lucky enough to serve with you for, I think it was, two years and seven months, and maybe a little longer. But we worked very well together on the council, and I've watched you as president, and I served under you as vice president, I believe. And we did a lot of great things, and I've watched you in the past few years as you still do a lot of great things. Your heart you wear on your sleeve. You care tremendously about everyone in South Kingstown, and, you know, the town itself, the brick and mortar, the people. There isn't any... Anything you don't care about, which I admire, always have, and we're going to miss you. But I... One thing I can say, not only did we serve well together, and I appreciate everything you've done for the town, but I can call you my friend. So with that, I have another citation. And this one is from the House of Representatives, and it's to Councilwoman Margaret Meg Healy, President of the South Kingstown Town Council, in recognition of your service, and thanking you for your three terms of dedicated and faithful service to the people of the town of South Kingstown, Rhode Island. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued good fortune. It's proposed by myself, Representative Carol Hagan-Mackenty, Representative Kathleen Fogarty, and Representative Theresa Tansy. And we mean this sincerely. They would have been here. They had to be at another forum, which I'm not at, because I'm here, so... But Meg, I wish you all the best. You've served the town very, very well, and you should be very proud. And I'm proud of all the work you've done.
Now you made me cry.
I know.
Well... I thank you. It's killing me that I'm not working again. In heart, I truthfully wish I could, but as you know, I have some health issues that I have to take care of right... So hopefully, two years from now, my hat will be back in the ring.
Maybe you'll be back.
Thank you. But I think every... The proudest moment that I have had to share is being a part of being able to make decisions for the town of South Kingstown. I absolutely wear my heart on my sleeve, but I have to rule with my head and make the best decisions that we, as a group, come together to culminate, to drive the forces within the town, to support the community, to support the children, to support the elderly. And I've done that, I think, with dignity and a lot of pride. I'm going to miss it tremendously. And not putting my name on the ballot was one of the hardest things that I had to do. But if I don't get my health back on track, then I can't come back. So two years from now, I hope I'll be here to support everybody again, and I thank you so much.
Thank you, Meg. You've done a great job. You served with grace as well.
I love it. I absolutely... It's a labor of love. Certainly doesn't put food on the table for many of us.
That we know. That we know.
It's a labor of love, and it's because we care.
But your dedication and service did not go unnoticed. Everyone has noticed.
I didn't expect this. Thank you.
But with that...
Okay. I'm sorry it was blubbery. Let's move on if there's any more comments, because I'm going to cry the whole day.
Jim has a comment.
Madam President, Jim O'Neill. And I had the honor of four years I spent with you. And, you know, a couple of things I always think about when I think about you. A big heart. The whole community knows about that. But you always had the most calming influence, just cool and calm, and people appreciated that, because the politics today is a little brutal, a little rough, and it's so personal. And you, in particular, always held to the higher ground. And that's what makes a great leader. So I thank you for your friendship and your service for all those years.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. Any comments? Any comments here at the table?
Yeah, I just wanted to address a gentleman earlier. You know, I definitely respect your point of view on that. I can say personally, I don't consider our town a sanctuary city, but the publication that you mentioned does, so it's their opinion. When we had this issue going on in our town, there was a lot of things going on in the country at that time. There were people that were affected in my own business, where we had people that were stuck overseas, that were supposed to be renting some of our apartments here for URI, that weren't able to do so. There was a lot of anxiety and angst at the University of Rhode Island at that time. And we had a pretty well-put-together conservative effort from folks that wanted this ordinance put into place. During that time, we did have public hearings, and from what I remember, we had probably 95% of the folks got up and spoke in support of it, and maybe 5% spoke against it during that time. So in regards to having public input at that point, I believe that we did. I can see both sides and concerns of that. It was never anything against the police department. It was more about, simply just about protecting people in our community. And one of the conversations that I did have with some of the folks on the police department is that we always wanted someone to come forward regardless of their immigration status to report a crime. The concern would be that if someone was afraid, that they would could potentially get deported or have immigration issues, that they would not come forward and be a witness to a crime if that were to happen in our town. And that's, you know, where a lot of this came from. And, you know, one of the big things that I pulled it up while I was sitting here, you know, it's the town of South Kingstown is dedicated to providing all its residents fair and equal access to services, opportunities, and protections, and the town of South Kingstown respects, upholds, and values equal protection and equal treatment for all our residents regardless of immigration status. And fostering a relationship of trust, respect, and open communication between municipal employees and municipal residents is essential to South Kingstown's core mission, and public safety in South Kingstown is best promoted when victims and witnesses of crime feel safe in cooperating with law enforcement officials. And the town is appreciative of the commends of the police department for its commitment to, in history of implementing, non-discriminatory policies in the treatment of all individuals regardless of their immigration status. And the purpose of this ordinance is to foster respect and trust between law enforcement and residents, to protect limited resources, to encourage cooperation between residents and city officials, especially with law enforcement, and to ensure community security and due process for all. And that's... What I read there was just a preamble to the ordinance, and I don't think we need to get any more into it. Anyone can read it online. But I believe that the people that voted on it here at the council had the best and touches at heart, and we're listening to the community. People that may have abstained or voted against it had their reasons, and we respect their reasons as well. And that's why we're a council of five. Thank you.
I just wanted to say that I, this week, had the pleasure of going up to TF Green to see some veterans off for an honor flight to DC. And that's where we send some of our veterans to the nation's capital for the day to visit the memorials and to just see the sights and take it in and be honored for their service. And our own cameraman, Billy Forbes...
Billy Forbes, turn the camera on yourself.
He was one of the veterans that got to go. And if you ever get the chance to go up to the airport and watch the veterans come inside, they pass a beautiful honor guard of the fire departments and the fire chiefs that they organize. There's bagpipers there, and just dozens and dozens of people who are jumping at the chance to honor our veterans. And it's just so rewarding to see Billy in here every day and to know that we had a chance to honor him for what he's done for our country. So I just wanted to thank you again and say I'm just so proud to have you here, and thank you for everything that you do.
We love you, Mr. Forbes. Any other comments? Anybody else would like to come up to the podium?
Can I just add one word, because I forgot to say it?
Of course.
Vote.
November 6th. I wish you could vote for me, but my name's not on the ballot. I'm going to miss it tremendously. Anybody else? Seeing no more comments, let's move on to the town manager's report.
I'm going to start off with a bit of long-anticipated good news. The Rose Hill Solar Farm is generating electricity as of today, finally up and running. It's through the switch this afternoon. Actually, we have a lot of good news this week, starting at the top of the chart, thanks to the extraordinary efforts of all of the department heads and employees and the extraordinary leadership of Amy Reiner. The annual report is out, and it is gorgeous. It's a beautiful report. Everybody's received an electronic copy. Electronic copies are available for the public to download. It's been announced on Facebook. Hard copies will be available in all of the libraries and here in Town Hall, at the Clerk's Office and the City Manager's Office. If members of council need or want hard copies, they are available as well. Coming through the chart, what do we got that looks particularly noteworthy? We have run into a bit of a snag on the electric vehicle procurement. The state list, the contract that we were hoping to ride really isn't available to us. Wayne has been scrambling to look for an alternative contracting vehicle. We've had to seek an extension of our grant to... For the purchase of that vehicle. That's... Yeah, it's been a bit of a snag. We're hoping to overcome it, and we think we're still on track. We're hoping to add that electric vehicle to the fleet soon after the New Year. The other side of that is the charging stations, particularly the charging stations down at the Comfort Station in Wakefield, are open. We are starting to see pretty regular use. In fact, we're beginning to see the cost of that program. It looks to be about $50 a month right now. Whether that's going to increase or not, we can't tell yet, but we are seeing pretty steady use. We'll be monitoring that, and if it looks like it's going to be a real expense, obviously, we'll let the council know, and we'll adjust the program as necessary. The good news is the chargers are being used, and the bad news, I suppose, is they might be used a whole lot more. And if we see a whole lot more use, we're going to see some increases in budget items. So far, it's not a disaster, and it's been a good thing for those who are able to use We do have one note that the Clerk's Office has been dealing with. There is an additional name on the ballot for this coming election cycle. A gentleman named Kevin Sullivan had filed papers to be on the ballot, and then apparently no longer had the intention to remain on the ballot. His name has been printed. It is on the ballot, and the Clerk's Office has been working with the Board of Elections and the Secretary of State to make sure that notification gets out to the folks who've already voted, to folks who are using emergency ballots now, and obviously, to people who will show up at the polls. Votes cast for... On that line, for Kevin Sullivan, for the council race, will not be counted for Kevin Sullivan. He's not a qualified candidate. And all we can do is make sure folks know that and don't vote that line.
Actually, the letter, I will say, the letter that went out with absentee ballots, because I sat with a group of about 12 to 15 people over the weekend who were out of state or home, so casting the ballots, but it was on the forefront, and the letter was right straight ahead. So it was very directed, it was... Dale's signature is on it, actually. Very well-directed and very clear. So I think people who read those absentee or emergency ballots see that right in the forefront. That was...
That's right. And the notice on Election Day will be just as clear. I have to say, I think the Clerk's Office has done absolutely everything they can to ensure that the public is aware, that voters are aware of the additional name being on the ballot and that it not being one that votes will be counted for. So I think, again, they've done everything that can be done. You know, the Secretary of State and the Board of Elections didn't really want to deal with, you know, trying to redo all of the work that goes into producing a ballot and producing the, you know, the memory sticks and everything that goes into the electronic systems. The best we can do is make sure that the public is aware of the situation. One note on the yellow in staffing, and it's of note because it's yellow. You'll notice that the EMS department is now one vacancy. They're at one vacancy. We were looking at really deep vacancies when we started this year, and I have to just commend Craig Stanley and, again, Amy Reiner and the folks who do our personnel work. They really did everything they could to get word out and to do interviews, and that number is actually not bad. One vacancy for EMS at this point is really a lot better than we were. All right?
I met one of the new probationary paramedics as well, at the senior center, I think.
Okay.
And they took really good care of me in terms of checking my blood pressure.
The two red in staffing are items that I think the council is beginning to see more frequently. This is really comp time. It's IT. It's worth noting that the planning department, in the last two weeks, has covered nine compensable after-hours meetings. That's a lot of after-hour meetings for our staff, and that is time that we have to allow the staff to not be in the office during regular business hours. So that is an issue, and it's one that we are monitoring and one that we hope to eventually be able to figure out. But it's worth noting that we haven't figured it out, and it continues to be a challenge. Three vacancies on the library board. You heard from Candidates Night. That may soon be going from yellow to green again. We did get a... We'll have a contract item on tonight for the Painting of Hail library. We've got Kid Zone and the Ninja... Somebody help me.
Ninja Warrior.
Ninja Warrior, yeah. Apparently phenomenal success. Everybody enjoyed it, and that and Touch a Truck were the big park department successes over the last couple of weeks. The Park Department, Parks and Rec, points out that the Veterans Day race this year will be at 1:00 PM. It'll kick off at 1:00 PM, and that's coming up.
Housing Authority.
Yes. Talk about the Housing Authority and a couple of others. On to the next item then. We had the Housing Authority put together an application for CDBG monies back in the spring. It was a sort of big ask. They were asking for $380,000 to build a new laundry facility, as the council knows, because of concerns about health and the maintenance of equipment in individual units at the Housing Authority. at the Housing Authority, particularly at Curtis Corner. Washing machines and dryers were taken out of those units over the course of the last couple of years, leaving residents with no onsite laundry facility, which was really just not a tenable situation. The Housing Authority had sort of knocked around a couple of possible solutions and ultimately settled on the idea that they needed to build a facility dedicated for laundry there on the property. They did not have the money in the Public Housing Authority HUD allocation, and they really had this plan that was sort of a hope, but wasn't likely to see any funding from the traditional sources. We did put in for the CDBG again this year, knowing that chances were not great that they'd get the funding initially, and not to our surprise, when the initial allocation came out in the summer, their program was not funded. So the project was not funded, and we sort of thought, okay, we've got a good plan, we've got a good program, we're gonna have to dust it off and come back at this next year. As happens sometimes with a CDBG program, other projects drop out, and as funds become available, they look for the applications that weren't funded, that are eligible to be funded, that look like they've got their ducks in a row. And again, because the Housing Authority application was just rock solid, we found ourselves in the happy circumstance of being told this week, this past week, that the entire full funding will be available for that library, I'm sorry, for that laundry facility. So, we met on Friday of last week with the folks who are administering CDBG for the town with the Housing Authority Executive Director, and we've signed the initial paperwork with HUD or with the State Housing Division, and we're off to the races. We're hoping to break ground by spring.
Rob, I know you weren't here when these discussions first came up, and we had people coming to the meetings and complaining about the situation over there, but this has been so many years in the making. And I know the planning department helped with this application and made sure that it was solid, because they can be pretty daunting. And I can't tell you the joy that this will bring people. I already had a few residents that reached out to me to let me know how much it meant to them, and I really believe something as simple as laundry is a matter of dignity for people, especially when they're not in an area that they can walk to a laundromat or there's not an easy bus route for them to take. I think this is just wonderful, and I'm so excited and I'm so proud of the town staff that helped make this happen. So I can't tell you how happy it makes me and so many people in the town.
And I will say this, I've said it before. I think that this has also been a capacity building exercise for the Housing Authority, and I, yes, the planning department and some outside help was brought to bear here, but the Housing Authority itself also stepped up and undertook a task that previously, I think, would have been too daunting for the Housing Authority to take on.
Yeah, and the type of, those type of partnerships too. You know, I know that Housing Authority is almost sort of separate from us as far as governing goes, but I hope that through the process of this, with the building of the laundry facilities too, they'll engage some of those tenants through the process to find out, you know, what their real needs are and make sure that money is well-spent and that those units are what they need and are sustainable in those neighborhoods.
Now, all of that having been said, and yes, we should celebrate the success, it's also gonna be a challenging project. This is a, this is a pretty big project. It's not going to be a large facility. It'll be a relatively small building. But it's a, it's a new project for the Housing Authority. It's a new initiative. New construction is always difficult using federal funds. There are some challenges that we're gonna have to meet as we go forward, and the governance here is a little weird. The town is on the hook for this. This is CDBG monies, this is not the Public Housing Authority money, so we're gonna have to maintain a good working relationship with the Housing Authority and their, you know, outside advisor and this is not gonna be seamless exercise, but I think we're gonna meet with success, and I'm looking forward to cutting the ribbon on this one. This is a big deal. The next item from the state is a letter in response to my letter of two weeks ago from the Public Utilities Commission. Essentially, what the Public Utilities Commission has said to us is, you've asked whether we've determined if the unavailability of drinking water was caused by an event outside of SUEZ's control. We haven't made that determination. We think that if you have concerns about SUEZ's making or not making water available, the civil courts are the place for that question to be resolved. However, if you ask us specifically to determine or to make an interpretation of our treaty or our, what do they call it? Tariff, our tariff with SUEZ, we will consider giving you an interpretation. So I'm gonna follow up with the Public Utilities Commission and ask them for their interpretation of whether or not the events constitute an event beyond the control of the regulated entity. And then finally, there is a statewide planning division study underway. I've been serving on the steering committee for that division. They are looking at business resiliency after, particularly after flooding. It turns out that according to FEMA data, 40% of businesses that are flooded will never open again. That's a big number. That's a pretty huge hit. So they're trying to figure out how to improve the chances of businesses that are in flood-prone areas to be resilient enough and open their doors after waters have subsided. These are the study areas that are, the ones that are being contemplated. I pull it up because South Kingstown along the shore is one of the places that we're gonna be looking for businesses to participate in this study and a pitch to businesses that might be out there. Participating in this program would mean that you'd get somebody to come in and talk to you about resiliency and produce for you a brief description of how you might improve resiliency in your particular location for your type of business. So this is a sort of free consulting for businesses that wanna participate. And that is my report.
Rob, I have a question on one of your items on the report under building and zoning for the food trucks. I had a couple of questions this week already, and it's Monday, about the new food truck policy and the food peddler change, and I'm just wondering where we are on that and if we have anything coming down the pipeline for a new policy.
We don't have to have a new policy in place until July of next year. The rule, the state statute that takes effect has effect for state agencies in January and has effect for local agencies and local governments in July of next year.
Gotcha.
That having been said, we are, we've already begun discussions, and we are trying to schedule, Wayne is at a national conference this week, and he's one of the critical players, so we didn't schedule it for this week. But when Wayne gets back next week, it's one of the first things we need to sit down with him to talk about is figuring out what we're gonna do about mobile food establishments, and there's a bunch of different moving pieces around this. Essentially, the new state rule is that there are no peddler's license restrictions on food trucks or on mobile food services. In theory now, if there is no local rule, a truck can roll into town and park anywhere in a town and serve food from that location. The state statute allows for local municipalities to define the areas in which those food establishments may operate on public roads. So the first question for us is which roads, at which hours of the day, which months of the year, what restrictions are reasonable for us with regard to those food truck venues? The next question, which is related, is a zoning question, and that is, you know, we have zoning that would prohibit the service of food on private property because it's zoned industrial, for example. Should that be shifted? Should we allow food trucks or food service in zones that currently don't allow food service? And all of that's very much related to the brick-and-mortar restaurants in town, and knowing that we don't want to do anything that's gonna make it harder for a brick-and-mortar business to be successful. So we've gotta, we've gotta balance a bunch of different things. I can't tell you that we've figured it out. What I can tell you is we're putting the questions together, and at some point, we'll have to, have to come to some conclusions about how best to proceed. We hope to do that in conversation with the Chamber of Commerce, with the restaurant owners here in town, with food truck operators. Food trucks have been a great boon in a lot of places. It's been, it's a wonderful business model in a lot of ways, but it also is a very different business model, which has implications for traditional businesses.
For some reason, I thought that it was going into effect January 1st, so I'm glad to hear that it doesn't, for us, go into effect until July 1st, right?
It does go into effect for the state regulatory entities in January, and I imagine that means that on state property, all of that begins to be true in January.
Right. My last question was about the snow removal policy that we passed. I just wanna make sure that we're doing something to notify people of that ahead of the winter.
Yeah, I've got a draft letter that John's reviewing now. I drafted a letter that, letter or posting, it's not clear to me whether we're gonna send individual letters out to property owners or whether it's gonna be sort of a Facebook barrage kind of thing. But we are, we have produced a draft notice. John's looking at it, it's in his inbox anyway. So yes, we intend to make sure that everybody has given, is given the opportunity, first of all, to know that the ordinance is in place, and second, that if they meet the qualifications, there is a waiver process that they can, they can apply for. Beyond that, those are really the big pieces of that notice.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're ahead of that.
Yep. Well, I wanted to get that a couple of weeks ago, but it will be out before snow falls.
You say that, and then you just.
Yeah, right.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, it's actually, you're right, it's getting close now.
Very close. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, let's go to the town solicitors.
I'll follow that. I'm good unless there are any questions.
We're onto appointments then. I'm gonna make a resolution to appoint Lindsay Madam to a term on the library board of trustees to expire in July 2019, and then also to appoint Tim Murphy and Hillary Carlson to terms to expire in July 2021.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or accusations? Seeing none, motion carries. Moving on to item 13A, which is under new business. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Martone Services in Narragansett for the exterior painting of the Robert Barley Hale Library, according to the bid specifications, in an amount not to exceed $19,250. And this was sent in a memorandum from the library director to the town manager on October 16th. Any discussion?
Motion to approve item 13A as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. 13B is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Metro USA Fire Protection for the upgrade of the fire alarm systems to the highway garage, in the amount not to exceed $23,961, including a $2,000 contingency. Any funding in excess of $20,000 shall be allocated from the Highway Division's professional services account. And again, this was in a memorandum to the town manager on October 12th, award of bid for fire alarm upgrade.
Motion to approve item 13B is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. D is a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Verizon Wireless in support for wireless service and support equipment in accordance with the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement Number 299, and this has an option to extend the contract in accordance with the state and as further described again in a memorandum from the Information Technology Director to the town manager on October 16th.
I will note that this is one of those moments when I know I've moved on because GSA is being knocked out. My former employer's contract is no longer the low contract price.
Yeah, motion to approve item 13D. Thank you for finding these savings.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Again, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to E, which is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds in an amount not to exceed $25,000 from the Technology Improvement Fund on assigned fund balance for upgrade of the town's Vision Government Solutions Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal Program and Software. And again, this is in a memorandum from the Technology Director to the town manager on October 16th.
Motion to approve item 13E is presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does carry. Item number F is a resolution authorizing the awards of contract to Granger Industrial Supply located here in Rhode Island in Warwick for, oh, this is a long, industrial equipment and supplies based on the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement Number 348 for the period of October 1st of this year to June 30th of 2019, with extensions as granted by the state. And this has been described again in a memorandum from the procurement administrator to the town manager dated October 17th.
Motion to approve 13F.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. G is a resolution authorizing the extension of an award of contract originally granted on November 23rd of 2015 and amended on December 14th of 2015 to AmeriGas Propane located here in Wakefield, liquid in propane at an increment of .264 cents for the period of October 1st of this year to September 30th of 2021. And this was also involved in a memo from the procurement administrator to the town manager on October 12th.
Motion to approve item 13G. This is another instance of getting pretty good savings, like 30% reduced cost. So thanks to AmeriGas for matching that master price agreement.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:35. I'm so gonna miss it. I go to, I tell ya.